Okay, it's six o'clock. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for June 20, I'm sorry, June. I'm trying to rush through part of the year to get us closer to normalcy. January 25th, 2021. Call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in a moment of quiet reflection. And now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Very good. We have the minutes of January 11th, 2021. Any changes or corrections from anyone? Not seeing any indication that there's a request. They will stand approved as submitted. Moving on to public comment, I have one person in the audience who has signed up for public comment, and that's Tom DiAgostino?
Yes, close.
Close? If you'll come down to the podium, you can remove your mask while you're talking. I'd ask that you not touch the podium. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. I read the flyer that came to me a week and a half ago, and I read it thoroughly because I had the time to do it. And one thing that I saw was the trash, that the trash company that they, the city has now retained to pick up trash here. I don't have any problem with them doing that, but I do have an issue, well, I have several issues, but one of them is that I would pay, even though I have a contract with another company, I would be paying a fee, a tax, whatever you want, call it, just because, just because I'm a, I live here in Arvada. I don't, that is not, that is not legal, no matter who the city attorney is, because I've checked in with many attorneys, and it's not, it's not just here, it's all over, in the state and outside of the state, but it's not, it's not going to hold, it's not going to hold water. I don't, I'm not going to pay for something I didn't order. What's really important, though, and I wanted to tell you, is that I fired the company that you guys are retaining because of the poor service, okay? And if I had a chance to tell you this earlier, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to have told you about this. But it was very poor, but that is not the issue. Now, the issue is I'm paying for something that I didn't want, and it's a tax, and I don't intend to do it. I've already been threatened when I called the person that represents where I live, that they would lien my property. Doesn't do much to me when somebody threatens me like that, whether it's a threat or whatever. But it's something that I would, I really want to get in front of a judge, whoever represents the city, and argue my case, okay? I even asked if I could talk to other people that may have, have the same feelings I have about this, and I was never given that information and never offered it, okay? I would have liked to talk to other people, because I understand that this has been partially adjudicated in the past. I don't know when, or I don't know the circumstances or anything, but I would love to know who else was been involved and is interested in this issue, but I know personally, I'm not interested, and I will not pay a fee just for that, and I will try and figure out how I can get in front of a judge to give him my two cents on this one. It's not a lot of money, it's not, the money's not the issue. This is, this is a, you know, it's a taxation issue that I don't, I don't, I don't think that they could be, I can, they could push on, on the average person. So I would like to get some feedback from the city council, whomever in the city, so I can find out more about this issue. I wasn't, I didn't see it earlier. I understand it happened earlier in the year when this was voted on, but I'd like to know more about this, and I'd like to know how I can appeal this decision at this, at this stage.
Okay, this is public comment time, so it's time for you to make your comments. We've got your information, and somebody from the team will be contacting you to answer your questions and to provide you more information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, we have some people for public comment at this time via Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Young. How are you this evening?
Hi, I'm just fine, thank you.
Good.
Good evening. Due to COVID-19, like many citizens, I've had some time to reflect on what the new normal might look like in my community. The first thing that occurred to me is the daily routine of commuting looks like it is being replaced by telecommuting. Businesses are seeking, are seeing increased productivity from staff working at home, and they are seeking locations where they can open windows for health reasons. Furthermore, they're fleeing the center cities. People have learned that high-density locations are not healthy due to the easier spread of disease, and now that millennials are marrying and having children, they are seeking homes with yards so the children can play safely and shunning cramped apartments. These facts strongly suggest that the need for transit to commute downtown will be significantly less in the future. They also suggest that people will be attracted to more enjoyable, less dense suburban lifestyle. The future of commuter rail is uncertain at best. I'm also very concerned about the recent introduction of mixed-use zoning districts. These districts were intended to combine two or more uses, like residential with retailer-commercial on a single property. The notion was to create more neighborhoods like that wonderful Five Park, where residents can walk to nearby local services. However, it appears that mixed-use zoning districts are becoming another name for high-density residential. Of the half-decent or so conditional use permits requested so far, all but one asks for nearly 100% residential-only in mixed-use zones. I'm aware of more requests on their way to you, all residential. The conversion of commercial and retail opportunities into residential means a permanent loss in potential sales tax revenue. When the new LDC was adopted, the council expressed deep concern that mixed-use would become a synonym for residential. To date, it looks like that concern is being confirmed. I would urge this council to carefully consider the impact on our city of the emerging new normal and how current policies and ordinances align with these emerging trends. It would be a sad day to see council priorities that are at odds with the real world create a decline in the quality of life in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And then we have someone else?
Linda Shires.
Very good. Ms. Shires?
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Linda Shires, and I've been a resident in Arvada since 2003, so I'm a longtime resident. I'm also an elderly resident, and when I received the blue information printout in with my utility services, I called and I spoke to Jason in regards to the trash and the $5.13 for the minimum service, should I continue with the trash company that I currently have a contract with for doing my trash service. I realized that you voted on this as an ordinance in June 15th of this last year, and you voted, it was what, four to three, I believe, and I understand that, but in June, I think a lot of people were dealing with a virus, as I myself was. I was ill at the time, so I didn't, I wasn't thinking about trash service or the unified part of trash service, but since then, getting my bill, I did, I don't understand, and I guess I am not, I want you to know how to out-out completely and have no charges whatsoever, because it seems to me, what I understood from what you said, you're trying to encourage people to utilize this trash service, and it doesn't seem like encouragement to me when you're charging me a service for something that I don't want and I will not use. I did speak to Jason at length, and he told me since December 1st, approximately 700 customers have called him in regards to your minimum fee, which I don't think is legal. I'm, I don't want your service. I'm satisfied with my service that I've had for many years. They offer a senior rate, which I am a senior, and that's the other thing that I wanted to bring up to you for the single-family homes versus the people that are like in HOA residential areas. I listened to your meeting, and according to the information that I got, and you can correct me if I understood it incorrectly, that people that are currently in an HOA that have a different trash service than the united trash service that you want to provide through the city of Arvada, they can continue with that through their HOA. And what was brought up was, should they decide to join Arvada's trash, city trash service, then once they opted in, they couldn't opt out, which that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but what I'm wondering is, because they are allowed to keep their trash service that they currently have through their HOA, are you also charging each one of the households in that HOA residence $5.13 for the minimum service fee?
Ma'am, your time, your time is up.
For their trash service?
Ma'am, your time is up, but we have, do we have her contact information? Somebody from the team will be back in contact with you regarding the opt-out procedures, will listen to you in terms of your position, but you need to understand that under the ordinance has passed, the, the opt-out fee is mandatory, so, but they'll answer your questions with regard to HOAs and everything else of that nature. Thank you. What else do we have in terms of public comment? That's it for this, at this time. Very good. And as an aside, we have had a discussion as a council, and we like the ability for people to either come down in person or to appear via Zoom or by telephone, and even after the coronavirus crisis is over, we think that we'll be working on ways to continue to allow ours and to encourage our citizens to have multiple ways to be able to participate in these public meetings. So stay tuned for that, but one of the, one of the bright spots with what's happened here in the last almost year now is that there are some new normals, and we're learning new and better ways to do things, and being able to have citizens participate remotely does seem to have a lot of value, and so we're going to encourage our team to look at ways that we can continue to do that. Moving on to new business, we have a few items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and HPM for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. Next one's a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and CNL Water Solutions for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Diamond Contracting Corporation for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Edge Contracting for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and R&amp;D Pipeline Construction Incorporated for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. And we've got a lot of these. Next one's a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Brandon Construction Company for on-call development infrastructure warranty repair services. Next one's a resolution authorizing change order number two, change order number three to an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Mueller Engineering Company in the amount of $1,231,117 for professional services relating to engineering design services for West 72nd Avenue between Kipling Street and Sim Street. Next is a resolution authorizing a small cell facilities master license agreement by and between the city of Arvada and SQF LLC. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Ferris Machinery Company for services related to the purchase of two CCTV inspection vans for wastewater in an amount not to exceed approximately $387,000. Next is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $400,000 to Saltwarts LLC for the purchase of salt material in 2021. Next is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $400,000 to Central Salt LLC for the purchase of salt material in 2021. And the final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $200,000 to GMCO Corporation for the purchase of liquid de-icer material in 2021. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items are 21-013 through R21-024 all be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
All other votes have been cast, and the vote is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. We'll move on to resolutions. The first is R21025, a resolution regarding the triennial determination for the continuation of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, this resolution will authorize the, another three years of the city's participation in the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. You previously authorized, the stewardship council, as you know, was formed in 2006. You previously authorized the continuation for the three-year periods beginning in 2009, 2009, 2012, 2015, and 2018. All parties of the IGA must affirm the continuation of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council in order for it to continue as an organization. It is my understanding at this time that pretty much all the organizations have, have done so. There may be one more this week that will be considering this. As you well know, Councilmember Nancy Ford is the city council's appointee, liaison to the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, and I spoke with Nancy prior to this, prior to this evening, and Nancy supports the continuation of the stewardship council, and the recommendation before you tonight is to approve the resolution that would continue the stewardship council through 2024.
Very good. Are there any questions or action by council? Mr. Pfeiffer?
There aren't any questions. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
You may proceed.
I move that Resolution 21-025, a resolution regarding the triennial determination of the continuation of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, February 2021 through 2024 be approved.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
All other council members have voted in the affirmative as well. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to R21026, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Peace Jam Foundation for the use of property known as the Allen House and located at 11200 West 64th Avenue. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this resolution would authorize the continuation of the longstanding lease agreement with Peace Jam. This is a, would provide a net financial impact to the city of $4,800 for calendar year 2021 and would keep a nonprofit organization that serves our community and students and many others in a location in Arvada at the Allen House. We recommend approval of the resolution.
Ms. Marriott?
I just have a question for the city manager. So the question I would have is, you know, periodically, when we, when these leases come up and we redo these leases, do we have someone on the team who at least inquires of the leasing and assures that their, their mission is still compatible with the mission of the city and that they're still a functioning organization and, you know, that all the conditions by which we might be willing to grant them this lease are still present? I realize we get $400 a month for leasing that house, but obviously, it appears to me the market rate for that might be significantly higher than that, so we are providing, you know, some benefit to this organization, and I would just like to know whether we do anything to, to gain a surety that, that this is a functioning organization that still matches the, the goals that the city has.
Yes, we meet, we meet with them and ascertain that they are continuing to abide by the mission that they were formed.
Ms. Miller?
Happy to make a motion if there are no other questions.
You may proceed.
And I'm very excited that, actually, their work was nominated for a Nobel Peace Prize recently, so very excited about that. I move that Resolution 21-026, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Peace Jam Foundation for the use of property known as the Allen House and located at 11200 West 64th Avenue be approved.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of the council has voted in the affirmative as well, so that passes seven to zero. Next, I'll move on to R21027, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for the lease of the building at 7305 Grandview Avenue in Arvada. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this too is another, I'd say, fairly longstanding lease for the building at 7305 Grandview Avenue, which is occupied by the Chamber of Commerce, which we believe is, is one of our major partners in the business community that we collaborate with. Certainly during the pandemic this last year, the chamber was instrumental in helping us to reach out to the business community and work with the business community to implement measures to get through the, the pandemic. And again, we've negotiated the lease and presented it to you, again, at a cost of $4,800 for calendar year 2021, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Ms. Simpson?
If there are no other comments, I'd like to make the motion.
You may proceed.
All right. I also want to commend the chamber for all that they did, particularly in this past year. Arvada has weathered the pandemic economically far better than many of our peer cities, and so that's a testimony to the city's smart planning, but also to the resources that we had available through partners like the chamber. So with that, I will move that R21-027, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for the lease of the building at 7305 Grandview Avenue in Arvada be approved.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of the council also votes in the affirmative. That passes seven to zero. Our last resolution tonight is R21028, a resolution authorizing a ninth extension to the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis. Mr. Devon?
Actually, Your Honor, I will be presenting this one.
Okay, very good.
The city team is requesting that city council extend the emergency declaration from its current expiration date of January 31, 2021 to March 31, 2021. As council will note, March 13, 2021 will mark one year from the date of the city manager's initial declaration of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. When we came to city council approximately a year ago to request the initial extension of the emergency declaration, we certainly did not expect to be here again this year making similar requests to extend that, and I'm sure that none of you did either. This underscores the unprecedented and unforeseeable nature of this pandemic, as we have constantly seen changes in our situation and in the data that we've been receiving over the past year. Our situation certainly has improved since last March. We understand the virus in a little more detail now. We have a vaccine in the initial stages of distribution, and although there was a notable increase in, at the end of 2020, since our last extension request in November 2020, cases and hospitalizations have generally trended downward. However, we believe that a two-month extension of the emergency declaration is warranted for two reasons. First, we still have a lot of uncertainty ahead of us, as the crisis due to COVID-19 is ever-changing. We do not yet know the full impact of the holiday season on case counts and hospitalizations, and public health experts estimate we will not see population-level impacts from the vaccine distributions until April of 2021. We do not know for certain how any of these things will affect our community in the next two months. For the, for that reason, we need to remain flexible and be ready to act quickly when and if our circumstances change. Second, we believe an extension is warranted to allow us to continue to our emergency response efforts and also to facilitate future applications for emergency grant funding. The city manager has used the authority that he's been provided under the emergency declaration over the last year only as necessary to respond to the pandemic. The most recent use of the emergency authority was in response to increased case counts in December, where we limited access to city facilities. City council has been and will be, will continue to be informed of any use of the city manager's authority as soon as practical under the circumstances. For all these reasons, the Arvada team recommends that city council approve R21028, a resolution authorizing a ninth extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis.
Thank you for that. I'll open it up for city council questions or actions. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I wanted to, I think your presentation answered most of the questions, but I would have a, kind of a specific question for either the city attorney or the city manager about, in your opinion, when do you believe that the necessity for this emergency declaration will end?
I'll attempt to answer that question. I think, I think as we approach the next date, which is March 31st, if we continue to see a reduction in cases, which, you know, fall below, say, the three, the number of around 300 per 100,000 in population, if we are able to see that reduction continue, and we're also able to see wider distribution of the vaccine and more normal returning to business throughout our communities in Jefferson County and in Adams County, then I believe we would be able to consider not to renew the declaration past March 31st.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a, a comment. I, I, you know, when we look at something like this, there's so many unknowns, this declaration will take us past a year of, of being under the emergency declaration. We'll note that one of the real positive things about city government is, is that we, your elected representatives, have renewed this declaration every two months over the past year, and that it hasn't been just the, the city manager declaring himself in an emergency situation and, and, and doing it. So I think there's a good check and balance here. I think the, it's very warranted to continue with this emergency declaration for just a little while longer from the standpoint of there's still many coronavirus recovery and grant opportunities available that will need to either be applied for or completed that the city has done, and some of those hinge on the fact that the city does have an emergency declaration. So for that reason, I will be voting yes, but I would note that, that, you know, we've got to be near the end of this after nearly a year, and, and that normal may not be the same as normal used to be, but, but at some point, it's hard to call what's normal a, an emergency anymore, so I would, I would just note that.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott?
So I'll move that R21-028, a resolution authorizing a ninth extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis be approved.
Motion for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, that's, I incorrectly voted. I did intend to vote yes, so please, please, didn't reach quite far enough. Mr. Devon, please accept my apologies. I did not want to take your emergency powers away from you, but for the record, I am voting yes on that. yes on that, so it passes unanimously. We unfortunately have no first readings tonight, which really saddens me, because we love to hear Mayor Protim go through the first readings. So we'll move on to our public hearings. First is Council Bill 21-001, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article II, Contractors, et cetera, of Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number 4749. At the same time, we'll consider R. 21-029, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for rights-of-way work permits and services pursuant to Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what we're asking you to do tonight through this ordinance is to establish one consistent general contractor's license fee of $200 and replacing about, I think, 14 fees that we have in place right now for general contractor licenses, depending on the different types and trades and other factors along those lines. What our Community and Economic Development Team has determined is that by replacing this one fee of $200, we are making it much more simple for general contractors to get licenses to work in our right of way, which is an efficiency situation, I think, a customer service situation, and benefit our, the average annual licensing fee has been about $259, so the $200 that we're proposing right now is close to that number. We will see a reduction in revenue, probably somewhere around $35,000 to $37,000, $38,000 a year, but that is a reduction that we will gladly take in return for the benefits that would be provided by putting this in place and providing a much more consistent and expeditious manner for issuing these licenses. So because of that, we're recommending approval of the ordinance and the accompanying resolution. And if you have any questions, I know we have Britta Van Horn from our Community and Economic Development Team that's available to answer any questions, if you have any.
Very good. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this issue?
There is not.
Okay, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Jones.
I'll reserve the motion if there.
There are no other questions. You may proceed.
Oh, I will then make the motion, and then I'll speak to the motion. I move that Council Bill 21-001, an ordinance repealing and reacting Article II, Contractors, et cetera, of Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the City Arvada, of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading numbered 4749 and ordered, published by title only. And just want to really applaud the team for looking at ways to make it easier to do business with the City of Arvada. I know that, you know, there's probably a lot of little things that, it's all the little things that build up that create all the issues, and so I just, again, just wanted to applaud the team for kind of peeling back the onion at several layers and finding ways to do things differently and better. So I obviously will be supporting this and voting yes.
Mr. Jones.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marriott. Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make a comment as well before I vote. I'm going to be voting yes as well. Again, I think this is great work by our city team. I think anytime we can simplify the processes and the procedures for business to be able to get done, for work to be done, is a very appropriate thing to do. And further, I want to compliment the city team for, in this time of great change in the way government and all of us are operating, that they still have their eye on the ball with the core services that the city provides, one of which is permitting and building permits, and coming up with a better way to do one of our core services. I think that's one of the real secrets of Arvada and one of the great benefits that I've had in being, in growing up in Arvada, is that we have outstanding city government, and that doesn't happen by accident. That happens only because it's paid attention to, and I think this is a good example, in a very small way, but enough of these small changes make a big difference over time, so I will be voting yes as well.
Okay, the votes are cast. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Sorry, Mayor, I vote yes.
Thank you. Rest of the council has voted in the affirmative as well. That passes seven to zero. I made a big faux pas. I forgot to beat my gavel when I opened the first public hearing, and I noticed that my gavel disappeared, and I have the Mayor Protim's gavel here tonight, so I'll be using that until mine is recovered somewhere along the way. It might be being held hostage with regard to a certain football bet or something, I'm not sure. So I will, using that very nice gavel, open the public hearing on Council Bill 21-002, an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the 2021 operating and capital budget in the amount of $950,000, and authorizing the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the signal replacements at West 58th Avenue and Independence Street and West 86th Parkway and Kipling Street, Project Number 18TC03, CDOT Project Number SHEM040-033, Ordinance Number 4750. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this action before you would be the First Amendment to the 2021 budget in order for us to be able to collaborate with the Colorado Department of Transportation in a signal replacement project, as you mentioned, at West 58th Avenue and Independence Street and at West 86th Avenue and Kipling Street. These are two intersections where the signal equipment needs to be replaced. We had received a grant from CDOT. We actually supplemented that grant as construction costs increased, and we are now ready to move forward with this project, which is requiring us to request the First Amendment to the budget and also to, you know, move forward with the grant with CDOT as described in the report. This is a good example of our work with CDOT in order to improve safety and traffic safety and so forth around the city, and so we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Do we have any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item?
We do not.
Fair enough. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott.
Mayor, I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
You may proceed. Yes, Ms. Ford.
Thank you. I move that CB 21-002, an ordinance authorizing the, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Hold on. Sorry, I skipped ahead. I move that R. 21-029, a resolution.
No, 002.
Oh, say that again, I'm sorry.
Council Bill 21-002. I think you started out right. Ordinance authorizing the First Amendment.
Okay, I wasn't, I thought I skipped ahead. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I move that CB 21-002, an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the 2021 operating and capital budget in the amount of $950,000, and authorizing the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the signal replacements at West 58th Avenue and Independence Street and West 86th Parkway and Kipling Street, Project Number 18-TC-03, CDOT Project Number SHEM040-033, be approved on final reading numbered 4750 and ordered, published by title only. And I vote yes.
Thank you. That's better than the time Mr. Marriott made a motion and then voted against his own motion. So Ms. Ford has voted yes. Rest of council has voted yes as well. That passes unanimously.
Your Honor, I just wanted to make certain that council had voted on the resolution associated with the repeal and reenactment of Chapter 78. I don't think that I heard it, but if you voted on it.
Nope, we did not, so thank you for catching that. So that was, Mr. Marriott made the first motion on that. Mr. Marriott, do you want to make the, that's paragraph A1, that, because they were combined. I guess the city attorney earns her pay tonight.
Where is this?
This is R. 21-029, Resolution Adopting the Amended Fee Schedule.
I made the original motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Do you have it?
No, I need to get to it.
That's right. Marriott was just supporting your motion.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time finding it.
Do you have it?
Go ahead.
Ms. Morris got it.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 21-029, a resolution, oh, I move that R. 21-029, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for rights-of-way work permits and services pursuant to Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the City of Arvada be approved.
Motion for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of the council votes yes as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you for correcting me. Ms. Morris, next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 21-003, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have Director of Finance, Brian Archer, who will make a short presentation regarding the proposed ordinance prior to your consideration through the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Archer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mr. Devon. I don't know if the presentation's going to be called up. I can't see if it is, but if not, we can just jump in. As you all know, the budget process starts approximately eight months in advance of the time period that city council needs to approve the annual budget. Next slide, please. So starting in October, city council is required to approve the budget for the next fiscal year. That has to be done by ordinance, and it is the only way that a budget can be changed. It is required to have a first and second reading. Throughout the year, the budget can be updated with a resolution. Many of these resolutions are items like grants that we receive or one-off items that were not considered during the budget process that we would like formal approval by city council. Those happen predominantly January through November, and in normal years, we take a final cleanup ordinance or supplemental ordinance to city council in December. This year, you are getting that presentation now in January. Next slide, please. What you see on this chart is what city council approved as the original budget in October of 2019. The carryover ordinance, which happens usually each year in April, of approximately $47 million, leaving our total current budget at a little over $282 million. Tonight, we are asking you to approve an additional $19.5 million, bringing our overall ordinance in appropriation to $302 million. While this is quite a large number, I'm excited to report that over $17 million of this $19 million came through either grants or funding from outside organizations. Next slide. We just talked about this a little bit. There are some items that are coming out of our reserves, and we will cover those quickly as we go through each one of these slides. Next slide, please. As you can see, for the general fund, we have approximately $11 million that we are asking to you to approve. Of that $11 million, $9.5 million is related to the CARES Act funding, dollars that we received from Jefferson and Adams County, and then an additional $300,000 that we had to use out of our own fund balance. Next slide. The other increases in the general fund are related to the payback loan that the city council, Urberry Noel, and Economic Development Boards worked together to put in play before the CARES Act came around. Now, we didn't use those funds, and so we needed to return those dollars back to the Urberry Noel and the Economic Development, and then some additional operating charges that came about outside of our budget process. Next slide. In the Streets Fund, we had an additional $350,000. They took advantage of the nice weather in 2020 and were able to do some additional work. This was funded by transfers from current projects and some use of fund balance. The Housing Fund is asking for approximately $1.5 million increase related to rental vouchers. They did an amazing job getting additional grant revenues to help out some of the most needy in our community. Next slide. Police tax increment, about $156,000 increase. Again, as the ongoing theme, these were grant revenues that they obtained throughout 2020 to allow them to buy some equipment, some PPE, and some supplies related to COVID, and then overtime. In our CIP Fund, we brought an approximate $1.5 million budget amendment to city council last February. This was related to some trail improvements and a grant that we received. $3.5 million funded by the Urberry Noel to help beautify the streetscape along Ralston Road, and $140,000 for outside costs, costs that were outside of the project of Ralston Road Phase 1 that were funded by the water and stormwater funds. Next slide. In stormwater, you will see three items, again, funded by outside of the stormwater revenues, to help advance some of the items working on in that enterprise fund. In the vehicle fund, we brought the first budget amendment to city council way back in January of last year to help us buy heavy vehicle lift that completed the items needed in the new Parks Fleet Stores building. Also, an additional purchase of fuel pump and an oil system repair, and then some items related to the golf course. Next slide. This final slide shows the one fund that had the most movement in 2020. As many of us were thrown into the deep end in March, we had to go remote. Our technology team did a tremendous job supporting all of the city, enabling us to continue to get our work done, and so you will see many of these items are related to that. Along with going remote comes the people that want to do harm to the city, and so you will see that many of these items are to increase our security and defend some of the software and some of the programs that we have. While there are many items on this list, each and every one of these items had been budgeted in the past, but the timing needed to get moved up, and so we moved the timing up on many of these items and took these dollars out of the fund balance. Next slide. So that's a quick and dirty on what we are asking of city council tonight. Any questions?
Well, first, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public comment tonight?
There is not.
Okay, very good. Now I'll open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Jones.
I don't have any questions. I'm happy to make the motion.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 21-003, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2020, be approved on final reading numbered 4751 and ordered, published by title only.
Motion for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Remaining council also votes yes. It passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 21-005, an ordinance amending and adding certain sections of Chapter 70, Personnel Rules of the Arvada City Code. Who's handling this one? Mr. Devon?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Because it's easy, I, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I get to introduce Acting Director of Human Resources, Gabrielle Ballmer, who will provide you with a brief presentation on the action that's proposed tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Williams, and members of council. Thank you for your time this evening, as I present to you a brief overview of our rules provisions and the reasons behind those. Could please go to the next slide? So I'm sure you are aware of two very important laws that the State of Colorado has passed recently, including, these are the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act and the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act. These laws were enacted effective January 1st and require several changes to the way we hire, promote, and administer pay and leave programs at the city. Certain articles of our personnel rules have been revised in order for us to successfully comply with these new requirements. I'm going to attempt to provide you I'm going to attempt to provide you with an overview of these changes today, a brief one. In your package, you'll find that you do have a detailed listing of these articles and the changes that were made, along with a redlined version that you can compare what was in the rules before these recommended updates and what they are today. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. This is a pretty comprehensive law requiring several changes. The first one being around the opportunity to promote. The law requires that employers now make reasonable efforts to post every possible promotional opportunity to all employees before making a promotion decision. So we've got to update rules that provide exceptions to job postings. We need to do a reasonable job of making sure we post all opportunities, because as you can see, if we don't get this right, violations can carry fines of up to $10,000 depending on the job that's posted or not posted in this case. So very important that we are amending our rules to make this work appropriately. Next slide, please. The Act also is intending to close a pay gap between men and women in Colorado, and to that end, it prohibits employers from paying different wages to employees performing substantially similar work based on gender. And substantially similar work is determined or defined as substantially similar skill, effort, and responsibility. The law does allow for different pay rates to be paid for very limited reasons, as you can see listed there. The ones that are most relevant to us here at the city will be the system of seniority, performance or merit system, and relevant education, training, or experience that an employee brings with them to the job. Also, shift work is something that we also have here at the city. This Act essentially eliminates market as a reason to pay different wages, which means our market-based pay plan will need to now have a much stronger internal value component to it. Next slide, please. The Act also prohibits employers from asking applicants for their salary history or current salary and using that information to base a future job offer. Next slide, please. So based on those requirements, we have made several adjustments or amendments to our personnel rules. Article 2, dealing with employment, we have updated language related to posting of promotional opportunities and removed any language that allowed exceptions to postings in the past. We've also removed a language that allows an appointing authority to hire a person into a position without first posting the job for a competitive process. Next slide, please. Under Article 3, Employee Compensation, we have introduced language into our Classification System section that includes an internal equity evaluation component to the way we classify jobs. So now we will be classifying jobs based on both market data and an internal value component. We've eliminated regrades from our process, because when we regraded jobs in the past, it was based solely on market data, and we won't be doing that any longer. And then appointment rates. We have adjusted the language so that HR can facilitate job offers that are fair and equitable based on a candidate's relevant education, training, and experience as compared to peers doing similar work. HR will be able to facilitate these job offers up to the middle of the pay grade, and anything beyond that would still need the city manager's approval. Next slide, please. The next section is still, we're still in the Employee Compensation chapter, and this is about employee movements. So if they transfer, or promote, or reassign, or go into a different pay grade, essentially, we have adjusted our language that used to be based on their previous pay, and now the language repeats the idea that we will place them into the new grade based on an assessment of their qualifications as compared to their peers doing substantially similar work. It also does remove language referencing frozen employees, and this was the practice of freezing someone above the pay range. We don't believe that that is going to be a defensible reason to pay people differently going forward, so we have removed that reference. Next slide, please. Articles 5 and 6 have to do with employee discipline. There are many ways to discipline employees when they have creative problems around employee conduct and responsibilities, and one of them is the step reduction in pay. And after consulting with our legal team, we are not confident that a step reduction in pay would be defensible under this new law as a disciplinary measure, so we have removed reference to step reductions in pay across the personnel rules in all of these sections. But there are still many other options available to our managers. Next slide, please. Other efforts to comply with the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act other than updating our personnel rules include a pay equity analysis, which the city will conduct now on an annual basis. We did one in December, and we will continue to do it annually as part of our pay plan update. And as I mentioned, we will be introducing a new internal job evaluation process, which will allow us to grade jobs more equitatively when they do substantially similar skill, effort, and responsibility. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to turn to the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act, and this Act is about paid sick leave for all Colorado employees. So this Act requires all employers in Colorado to provide employees with at least one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours they work, up to a maximum of 48 hours. It also sets rules for carryover from year to year of sick leave that's not used but accrued, and reinstatement of sick leave for rehires. And it expands the purposes for which sick leave can be used. It now includes domestic violence and public health emergency closures. And it expands the definition of a family member for which leave can be taken. Next slide, please. It also prohibits and limits employers from requesting documentation for the use of this leave until four consecutive days of leave have been used. And it prohibits us from disciplining employees for using this leave. It also provides for up to 80 hours of supplemental leave during a public health emergency. Next slide, please. So the chapter of the personal rules, the Article 4, Attendance and Leave, is the section we are updating to comply with these laws. The Sick Leave section, we've added language to create an accrual program for our temporary employees, which are also known as our Health Plan Eligible Variable Hour and Seasonal Employees. Our regular full-time and part-time employees already receive paid sick leave, so this is introducing a program for those temporary employees. It also adds language about reinstating up to 48 hours of unused leave upon rehire if an employee is rehired within six months. And it updates the reasons why sick leave can be used, including those reasons related to domestic violence and public health emergency. Next slide, please. Okay, we've also updated sections related to documentation to make it clear when and what managers can ask for in terms of documentation for the use of this leave, and also how employees should request the use of this leave. And we've redefined family members as required by the Act, so the definitions are there for you listed, but it will include a person who is related by blood, marriage, civil union, or adoption, a guardian of an employee, you know, if an employee is a guardian to a minor or was or had a guardian when they were a minor, and also a person for whom the employee is responsible for providing or arranging health or safety-related care. And we have added a section for additional paid sick leave during a public health emergency. This will carry on past COVID-19 onto the next public health emergency we may have in the future. Knock on wood, that won't happen soon, but should it happen, and with the current one we're in today, it does require all employers to supplement sick leave so that employees can have up to 80 hours of sick leave to use during a declared public health emergency. Next slide, please. So you might be wondering if there's a fiscal impact to all of these changes. I'm glad to say that for the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act, the financial impacts were minor for 2021 and were well within the city's ability to fund. We do anticipate that a new internal evaluation process that we're introducing may create some reclassifications or a need to change our pay structure. And those changes will be determined and accounted for as part of the 2022 budget. We will bring those recommendations to you at that time. The Healthy Families and Workplaces Act does have a cost to it. In order to build a sick leave program for our temporary staff, we did, the finance team conservatively estimated that if all of our seasonal and variable hour employees used the total amount of sick leave they were allowed, it would cost about $90,000 per year. And the funds that would be most affected are the parks, golf, and utilities funds. These budgets were adjusted to account for these increased costs. Next slide, please. I think that's it. I'm happy to take questions now.
Very good. Do we have any members of the public?
We do not.
Open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Marriott?
I don't have any questions, but I'll be happy to make a motion and anybody can discuss if they want. So I move that Council Bill 21 dash 005, an ordinance amending and adding certain sections of Chapter 70 Personnel Rules of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading, numbered 4752, and ordered published by title only.
Motions for approval? Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
All the votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, our final public hearing of the night. I'll open the public hearing on the conditional use permit for Old Town Residences generally located at 7267 West 56th Avenue. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have Planning Manager Rob Smontana introduce this item. The applicant is also here for our presentation. Rob?
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council.
Rob, you're cutting out on us. And now we see one of the joys of technology. Hope not. Do you have a way to get in contact with him?
We do. It appeared from his background on the Zoom call that he is in City Hall in his office, so Ms. Gillis has gone to get him so that he can do the presentation in person.
So he can be live and in person?
Yes.
What a novel approach. Mr. Devon, you need to work on your connectivity here in City Hall.
We're going to do it from my office.
Okay, very good.
I apologize for that. Not sure what happened, but lost my internet connection. So the applicant is requesting an approval of a conditional use permit for residential development within a mixed-use transit zoning district. The site is approximately four acres in size. The applicant did submit a conceptual plan with the proposed application. The project shows an access up to 56th Avenue. It contains approximately 252 units with 386 parking spaces. The project also includes some two-story townhomes along Vance Street. With that information, staff did review the application against the code, as did the planning commission. The planning commission did recommend approval at their November 17 meeting on a vote of six to one. We do have the mailing affidavit and posting log, and they are in order. We have other members of the Community and Economic Development Team here if you do have any questions. And as you mentioned, the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read something into the record in terms of this public hearing before I swear in the applicant and before we take any public comment on this. This matter comes before the City Council for a determination on the applicant's conditional use permit application made pursuant to the city's Land Development Code. The purpose of the conditional use process is to determine whether a particular land use is appropriate at the specific location where the use is requested, and whether that particular land use will have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. Council's discussion and determination tonight must focus on whether the application meets the following criteria. Number one, the application complies with the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. Number two, the application is consistent with the Arvada Comprehensive Plan. Number three, the use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district in which it is located. Number four, the size, scale, height, density, multimodal traffic impacts, hours of operation, and other similar characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. Number five, facilities and services will, prior to or as part of the development, be available to serve the subject property while maintaining adequate levels of service for existing development, and the application mitigates any adverse impacts on the surrounding area to the degree practicable. City Council welcomes public comment and testimony from the applicant. However, since we must consider only facts relevant to these criteria, please try to frame your comments and arguments accordingly. City Council must disregard any comments or arguments that do not relate to the applicable criteria. With that, we'll make the posting log and the mailing affidavit part of the record. Those in chambers who wish to testify, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you'll give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. Test, or I've sworn into the affirmative. You may proceed with your presentation. Let me begin by apologizing on behalf of myself and the city for the delays in getting this to hearing tonight. They were certainly not occasioned by the applicant or those opposed to this application. It was a mistake that was made here at the city, and I want to apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, there's no apology needed. There were obviously extenuating circumstances, and here we are today, so we're pleased to be here. And thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm Bill Mosher. It's M-O-S-H-E-R, I think I'm supposed to spell out my name. And I'm joined by Tina Lashbrook, who will also be presenting, L-A-S-H-B-R-O-K. And we're located at 1225 17th Street. On behalf of Trammell Crow Company and our residential subsidiary, High Street Residential, I appreciate the opportunity to present the Old Town Residences project to you tonight. The presentation outlines our plans for the properties located at the northwest corner of West 56th Avenue and Wadsworth Bypass. And as mentioned, we will approach each, our presentation in terms of the six criteria. And tonight, we ask the mayor and city council for approval of a conditional use permit for residential use on the property. So next slide, please. Just a sense of the context. You all are very well aware, but Old Town Residences is a 252-unit apartment project located on vacant Park and Ride property, formerly used by RTD. The property is located along the west right-of-way of the Wadsworth Bypass. To the north is Grandview Avenue and also two railroad tracks, one the Gold Line and one Freight Line, and also the Old Town Historic District. To the west, across Vance Street, is Arvada's Transit Hub. To the south, across 56th Street, is actually our mixed-use portion of the project, so 56 divides our two properties. The two parcels are a key transition area between New Town and Old Town retail corridor along Wadsworth. Next slide. We're proposing a mixed-use transit-oriented development. Mixed-use transit, MXT, is defined in the Land Development Code as a development that provides for urban-scale, higher-density residential and non-residential uses vertically or horizontally arranged on a single parcel or in a mixed, in a master-planned area. Our master plan includes a multifamily building on the north parcel that is, as I mentioned, 252 apartment homes on four floors over a two-level parking podium. two-level parking podium. There are two-story walk-up units that wrap the building along 56th, then also wrap the building along Vance on the east side of the, along the west side of the property. The intention is to be to strongly animate the pedestrian experience along 56th. We have high-quality landscaping, which we will address, including streetscape, plazas, public small urban parks, and an urban tree forest. There is no exposed or surface parking. Our plan for the south parcel, which you unanimously approved a few months ago, includes 128-room hotel and a 15,000-square-foot retail and restaurant center. The south's surface parking is dedicated to the resident, to the retail use only, but is all surface parking. We're financing the multifamily and the retail projects as, the retail project as one project. The goal is to open all three, hotel, retail, and multifamily at the same, similar timeframe. Today, as I mentioned, we're here to request your approval of the conditional use permit for the multifamily portion of the project in accordance with the provisions of the MXT 65 zoning district. Next slide. A brief reminder of some of the site constraints. It's not an easy site. As I mentioned, to the north, we have two rail lines that are fenced off. There is no access from our property to Old Town except at the Vance intersection. C.DOT right-of-way is to the east of us on the Wadsworth Bypass, and essentially is going down from our property as it goes under the bypass. 56th Avenue divides our two properties. 56th Avenue was, is connects Wadsworth and Vance, was built by the city, and due to the transit center and the parking studies that were done, all on-street parking was removed and is not included, which is one of the reasons we moved the retail across the street, since we had no available on-street parking. We have a 35-foot grade change between 56th Avenue and the railroad tracks, which necessitated structured parking, which also serves as a two-story retaining wall to the hill. We've worked very closely with the fire department, because what I went through from a constraint standpoint means we only have one access to this piece of property, and that's on 56th. And the fire department preferred that we only have one access point off of 56th, and so we have a single point of access on 56th. A couple of the site planning drivers, obviously, premier location next to the transit station and south of Old Town, which draws us to this. We obviously have great vehicular access from Wadsworth. We have attempted, and I'll go through some slides to optimize the views from Grandview. We understand the sensitivity of that. We have paid great attention to the importance of open space, so I'll be addressing that. We've got very strong pedestrian connections from the project, both the south parcel and the north parcel along 56th and up Vance to connect to Old Town and to the transit center. And in your planning, in the city's planning, these two parcels are key in connecting what's called New Town to the south along Wadsworth to Old Town, and so we are sort of a transitional property in that regard. Next slide. As the mayor mentioned, there are six criteria in the land use code regarding a conditional use permit. And so what we want to do is review each of the six. We meet each of the six criteria, and we'll go through and explain how we do that. Three of the criteria, frankly, are pretty easy to check off, and they're checked off in green on this slide. Number one, the site is situated within the zoning district of MXT 65. This translates to mixed-use transit with a 60-foot height restriction. Our design complies with Arvada's land development code and the MXT 65 zoning district. No major modifications are requested by us from the city. Our view, and I believe the staff's view, is that our development complies with the LDC. Criteria number three, residential use is clearly consistent with the MXT zone, and our approved development plan to the south complies with the mixed-use objectives of the zone district. So taking the two parcels together as one development complies with the mixed-use requirements. Finally, criteria number five relates to the surrounding infrastructure supporting the project. No new infrastructure is required. The residential use supports the city's investment in the transit station infrastructure, in the station plaza, and in the new 56th Avenue. The project also supports the nearby Old Town and New Town businesses. I'll now walk through how we meet the other criteria. I'll focus on criteria two first, and then Tina will talk about criteria four and six. Criteria two relates to the comprehensive plan, which identifies this site as mixed-use New Town and points to the Transit Station Framework Plan. The framework plan was a two-year plan undertaken by the city and the residents years ago before our involvement. And we've listed some of the major points that are included in the plan on this next slide. Sorry, I should have brought you to the next slide. So the next slide, we'll talk about the transit plan. Hopefully, there we go. Residential use within this mixed-use development responds to the comprehensive plan and the Transit Framework Plan goals. These goals include supporting transit by providing a variety of employment, retail, and housing within walking distance of a transit station, adding residential density around a transit station, supporting Old Town businesses, connecting Old Town to the New Town area with quality design that promotes pedestrian connection between the two areas, expressing commitment to open space and public spaces, and respecting Grandview's grand view. Next slide. In terms of the transit principles, we've included residential mixed-use projects next to the transit in a walkable environment adjacent to businesses, including new retail along Wadsworth and a new hotel. If you refer to the green and the blue areas in particular, you can see how we can address density and the efficient use of infrastructure by bringing many new customers and consumers to both the transit station and to Old Town in a very compact development. This development will put about 400 new riders, potential riders and consumers, next to the station with direct pedestrian access to the station and Old Town businesses. This overall plan on both properties has less traffic than any previous plan that we evaluated, particularly since we were not able to locate a grocery store on the south side, which substantially lowered the parking requirement. We spent much of our time shaping, designing, and amending the plan over the, over the previous, I wrote months, I actually should have said years, to respond to various community concerns. Next slide. Notable in the plan document is a commitment to open space. This slide represents images of the quality and the finish of our urban and open-space design, along with enlarged conceptual views of both the western and eastern edge of the site. Our project will have more than a third of the property allocated to open space. The percent of overall open space actually grows to about 60% of the site if you include the amenity courtyards in that calculation. The project also meets the city's small urban park design standards. We are importantly restoring the tree canopy along Grandview on this property and are providing 115 extra caliper inches, as requested by the Parks Department, and we're providing 57 trees, additional trees beyond those that are already located on the site, and are 57 trees over the parking, over the code requirement, I should add. The design incorporates quality design elements throughout, including hardscape plazas, trees, soft planters, and landscape furnishings. Care has been taken to ensure these elements complement and connect with the mixed-use TOD and pedestrian-oriented hotel and retail located directly to the south. Along the west side of the property, which is shown on the left side of this slide, bordered by Vance Street, we have created what we call Via Park, which creates a 40-foot buffer from Vance Street and expands upon the city's view corridor from the transit station established as part of the transit plan, and is roughly 1/4 acre in and of itself. This open space area is made up of high-quality surface materials, shade trees, shrubs, perennials, and benches. And there will be space for design, there will be space designed for reflection and as common gathering areas, while providing a strong pedestrian link to the transit station and to Grandview and the Old Town businesses. The seven townhomes along Vance are limited to two stories in height to enhance views from the station and Grandview. And from past discussions, I should point out that there are two sidewalks provided, one running adjacent to the curb line on Vance, as it does today, and another one that meanders through that allows for a less steep access up the hill. Next slide, please. Obviously, a key has been how we respond to Grandview. The view from Grandview is something we've been very sensitive to while designing our project and have gotten a lot of feedback from the public. I'd first like to remind you that the city decided back when they were working with RTD on the transit hub and the Old Town Station Plaza design, to purchase the Levy Building, which is outlined in red, to combine their land with the RTD station land to construct, construct the new station plaza, making it significantly larger than it was originally planned to be. One of the reasons the city did this was to preserve a view corridor on Grandview, as was requested in the transit area plan. You can see the former location of the Levy Building, as I mentioned, and the dark-blue view corridor that was created at the station platform and plaza area. Understanding that the rest of Grandview was important, we designed our building to try and limit the height on Vance to two-story, and that's the yellow dashed line that you see at that northwest corner of the site, and created a small urban park and set the overall buildings back 43 feet. In addition, we opened up the courtyard in that northwest corner so that there was no building on that corner to further expand the views. As you walk westward on Grandview and look towards the mountains, you would have a view plane. That was in addition to the view plane that the city created at the station. We also kept the height of the building to 34 feet above Grandview Avenue, which is the same height as the two-story homes along Grandview's north side, and roughly the height of many of the trees that are there today, and that the city is requiring us to not only replace in many cases, but to increase the numbers. Lastly, our building is approximately 195 feet and even more from the buildings that run along Grandview. And we've incorporated those two open courtyards that I mentioned, which actually are below the Grandview right-of-way, so you'll look down on those courtyards, and thereby preserving solar access and minimizing the visual effects of the building from Grandview. Next slide, please. So this shows in further detail how the Vance Street frontage is, has been approached. This slide shows the west side of the development. You can see we have set our walk-up apartments back 43 feet with additional open space, and have not allowed anything above two stories, so that, that's an additional 32 feet. So we've essentially have a total setback from Vance of 75 feet for any buildings over two stories. Again, this opened up the view corridor from the, from Vance Street and from the transit station. By the way, I'll mention the blue dotted arrow in the northwest corner shows a connection at the top of the hill directly into our development that the residents can use to go to Old Town. We added this additional connection recently in response to many business owners who suggested that there be a more direct access from the complex into Old Town without having to go up the hill on Vance and walk all the way around on 56th. So we feel that we've explained, next slide, please, feel that we've explained four of the six criteria, and we meet the intent of the city's comprehensive plan and the Transit Framework Area Plan. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Tina Lashbrook to walk through how we meet criteria four and criteria six. Tina?
Good evening.
And good evening. I'll be addressing, like Bill said, criteria four and six. Criteria four speaks to the size, scale, density, multimodal, traffic impacts, hours of operations, and other similar characteristics. Criteria six speaks to mitigating any adverse impacts to the surrounding areas. These two criteria are interwoven, and we've approached our project design to make sure it speaks to both of them. Next slide. This slide summarizes the key elements within our design, showing we have respected the criteria and the surrounding developments. I won't speak to each one of these points shown, but I will highlight, we paid, we paid close attention to the project's massing, open space, designs compatibility with Old Town, and how we've integrated the quality pedestrian experience within our design. You can see on the plan view of our project that we've lowered the middle portion of the building, shown in yellow, to three stories. We've also added a clubroom that you can walk out onto the roof deck, and will activate that portion of our building. The four-story units in the middle finger of the building stops at that clubroom and are pulled back approximately 12 feet, lessening the height impact of that portion of the building facing Grandview. This change is from our original design, and this change was made after hearing feedback from both the city and the community. Our walk-up units screen the parking garage on Vance and West 56th Avenue and add to the pedestrian experience. Our project design includes a variety of materials and colors, masonry brick, articulation, which are compatible with Old Town. We have included lobby and leasing center facade variations and multiple public urban parks, as Bill's mentioned, with a dog park as amenities to be shared with the surrounding community. We feel our project is appropriate size, scale, and height and density for the New Town area, and we've adjusted our height in the areas that face Old Town. Our traffic impact study shows no adverse impacts to the surrounding intersections. In fact, our original study was completed in 2015 and assumed a higher density of development than we currently proposed. We are now about half the number of daily trips that were originally proposed. This project is the bridge between the big-box development to the south and the Old Town District. The residential use will help both Old Town and New Town businesses by adding to the residential population in the area. Next slide. We understand that our property along Grandview is zoned mixed-use old, that, we understand the property along Grandview is zoned mixed-use Old Town up to four stories, and is part of the historic district. This slide illustrates further our project's relationship with the compatibility with the surrounding area, along with any future development. The property that surrounds the site is zoned MXT 35 and 65. We're showing two separate sections through our site to show the varied setbacks that help our project's north face, or the facade closest to Old Town, feel similar in scale to the Old Town zoning criteria, while also maintaining the MXT zoning district massing, building into and further down the hill along 56th Avenue. The top section is showing the portion of the building that is closest to Grandview. And when we say closest, it is 195 feet away from the nearest building on Grandview. You can see in the diagram where this section is cut through. This is the portion of the facade, which accounts for only 26% of the overall north elevation adjacent to Grandview, extends approximately 34 feet above the hillside. The two-story homes on the north side of Grandview are also approximately 34 feet. We feel we are compatible with the neighborhood context. To the west of this section, the building steps down a story in the center finger, and then steps down again along Vance, where we have placed lower-scale walk-up residences. Our project's two courtyards, which are open to the north, serve to further interrupt the facade, providing breaks between the taller elements. The bottom section on the slide cuts east of the walk-up apartments through our courtyard. The courtyard interrupts 33% of the total facade on the north side of our project. Next slide. As I mentioned, we've designed our street edge with design elements that point to a quality urban design for quality pedestrian experience. Similar to the streets within Old Town, this includes planners, seat walls with planners, setbacks, open space, benches, trash cans, quality paving, pedestrian lights, canopy overhang, building relief, and masonry detailing. Next slide. The next two slides show different design elements as an examples from Old Town and how our project is being designed to act as the transition between Old Town design and the New Town area. Traditional materials with emphasis on brick have been selected that are compatible with the architecture and character of Old Town. These choices reflect a level of charm, proportion, and craftsmanship from, found in this historic district. The building adopts a more transitional architectural styling, and as it moves further away from Old Town, meeting city objectives to create a distinctive place separate from Old Town. The architecture of the building is compatible with both the historic and newer buildings in Arvada. There are five offsets in the facade along 56th to help support the varied architecture and detailing. In additions, balconies, brick pilasters, and material changes break down the scale to a more human dimension while maintaining the desired urban character. High-quality materials are used throughout with masonry glass and other cementous products combined to support terraces, balconies, punched open in varied building heights of six, five, and two stories. We have examples of plazas, parks, and open space showing Grandview Plaza, flat roof or ornamental red brick detailing showing Arvada School, House Kitchen, St. Anne's. detailing showing Arvada School, House Kitchen, St. Anne's. Next slide. More red brick, flat roof examples at Hunter Bay Coffee, and blond brick and punched openings at Arvada Tavern. The Old Town parking area is another example of a plaza and open pedestrian sidewalk area. And lastly, speaking specifically to criteria six, regarding mitigating any adverse impacts on the surrounding area, we've designed our project with special attention, taken to preserve view corridors particularly from the transit station, introducing two-story height buildings to the Vance Street frontage, pulling the units back, and lower a portion of the middle of the building to three stories. Incorporating all parking into the parking garage not visible to the public, open courtyards to views from Old Town, increasing open space in excess of zoning requirements, as well as including multiple public urban parks and upgraded pedestrian connections to enhance the connections between the old and new town areas. Next slide. Now we can check off criteria four and six. In summary, we feel we've complied with all six criteria of the conditional use permit and request your approval of the conditional use permit for the residential use of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your initial presentation?
That does include it.
Very good.
Next slide.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. We've got Stephen Byers in the council chambers who wishes to address counsel. Evening, Mr. Byers.
Good evening. You want address and everything?
I've got it here because you did sign up.
Okay, can I just take just one second to thank the city for, it doesn't apply to this. During the pandemic, the support of the city for our mission work, the corps officers, one of whom is here, Gordon Rusnick, the city navigators, has been absolutely amazing. During pandemic, we have been able to, with the partners, with the city, with the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, with Family Tree, with Jefferson County, we've been able to house over thirty people, furnish them, and set them up with kitchens and bathrooms, and to date, I think we've had only two or three failures in that. So that's during the pandemic, and the support has been great, and just want to thank you, thank the city for that.
Very good.
I come today to speak against this proposal, ask you to vote it down. First, it clearly, to me, violates, I think it's now criteria two, whether it's one, two, or four, you can figure out. Even though it falls in the new town area, it violates the spirit of the design guidelines. Any project coming before design review must satisfy guideline four-point-one. We are currently looking at a project north of Ralston Boulevard that must satisfy four-point-one, which says, locate improvements to minimize impacts to primary views from Grand View Avenue across the valley. Consider keeping a new structure low or using a compact footprint to maintain views. Old Town Residence clearly violates the Arvada Transit Station Framework Plan, which requires the views from Grand View, not the south end of the train platform to be protected. I read verbatim from the plan. In the overview, "Old Town will be unique from all other stations along Gold Line with its location in the heart of a national historic district and the Grand View to the south." Another paragraph, "With its incredible mountain views to the south and west from Grand View." Another paragraph, "Because of the strong desire to maintain the views from Grand View to the south and west, the building heights and densities directly adjacent to the station, south of the tracks, will need to be tailored to preserve the views. While this may reduce the overall density for new development and reduce the transit ridership, these goals must be balanced with the local desires to preserve this key view." Plan goal number four, preserving the Grand View from Grand View. Another section, "View from Grand View must be preserved." Then, speaking of New Town, "The building character of this area will reflect higher densities while maintaining the key views from Grand View." There is also a picture which shows how it is supposed to look directly in this section. I note that the staff report changed preserving the Grand View and added at specific locations. Specific locations was not part of the plan, not what we talked about when it was developed. The sliding slope of changing the meaning of the plan has been ongoing over the last few years with this project. It's disingenuous, and it's not right. The plan, as well as the intent we see in the Old Town Guidelines, is for the view from all of Grand View, not a narrowed specific location. What I would ask you to look at is their view plan. Don't look at what remains, look at what disappears. And then remember what you're doing on, that Ora wants to go high on the other side of Old Wadsworth Bypass as well, of Wadsworth Bypass as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Mr. Byers, did you swear your, did you raise your hand when I was swearing people in? You did.
I just had my mask on, so you couldn't say I did.
But you, but you were, okay, just wanted to verify. Okay, we have other individuals who are testifying remotely.
There's four. First one is Nancy Young.
Okay. Ms. Young, I'll swear you in. Ms. Young, are you there? Ms. Young?
Can you hear me?
I can now. Will you raise your right hand?
I, I have.
Okay, thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're giving? These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You may proceed.
Thank you. As a one-hundred-percent residential building plunked down in the midst of a vibrant retail commercial neighborhood, this project will deactivate Vance and the north side of Fifty-S Sixth. Residential entrances are passing and reduce vibrancy. The public is not invited to enter the doorway, so few people are attracted there. This structure creates a wall that discourages foot traffic. The building is out of place compared to its immediate neighbors, especially along Grand View and east of the bypass. There is no building in the neighborhood that is as massive, and nothing mitigates its overwhelming size. Nearly three blocks long, almost two blocks wide, and six stories tall, plus an additional eight feet for equipment. It is well over twice the height of nearby buildings. The minimal setback near the rooftop on a few apartments has no effect on its visual height because what you see is the wall along Fifty-S Sixth. And the adverse impact on the Old Town National Historic District is not mitigated by the interior private terraces because you can't see past that other side of the building. It does not comply with the Transit Framework Plan, which promises that the historic legacy embodied by Old Town will be preserved. Not only does this structure eliminate the historic Grand View promised in the Transit Plan, it also tarnishes the jewel through its incompatibility and failure to mitigate the adverse impacts. A one-hundred-percent residential building at this location will forever eliminate additional opportunities to collect sales tax from the property. This is a separate application from the other parcel, and to me, it does not, it needs to be assessed without reference to the south parcel. And by the way, any estimate of potential sales tax generated by residents' purchases here is nothing more than a hope and a prayer, especially since residents will need to go elsewhere for the most taxable essential services. I urge you to reject this conditional use permit that will deactivate and disconnect Old Town from its surroundings and destroy our historic legacy as promised in the Transit Station Framework Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Shelley Cook, if you'll, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can. Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Shelley Cook, at fifty-seven oh eight Zephyr Street, Narvada. I'm also a board member for RTD for this area. I'm not speaking on behalf of the agency or the board, however. I'm here to support the conditional use permit. As you all would know, fast tracks and land use were always meant to go together. They were each part and parcel of the other, and that linkage is reflected in the Metro Vision Plan both then and now. And focusing on a particular aspect, the urban centers, of which Old Town is one, are meant to have more density and mixed use. And the important piece here is that they are meant to be served by transit, but then they're also supportive of transit. There's that interlocking piece. And now with the pandemic and likely enduring changes in commuter patterns, the need for these areas to be built will, I think, be more important than ever. And in fact, if you look at the buildings, or excuse me, the boardings and the lightings, that's people getting on off and on for the G-line stations both before and after the pandemic, the relationship between land use and transit activity, which is already strong, you see that correlation, it's increased significantly, or at least it has for the limited data so far for the G-line. Speaking as a resident of Old Town, I also have an appreciation for the hard work that the city and you all and neighbors, merchants have all done to sort of attend to the need for preservation of the historic character in the views. And I know there's room for disagreement. Your code calls for a balancing of those interests, and I think you've done a good job of it. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thank you for your service on the RTD Board. Must not be easy these days. Our next one?
Mindy Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore, if you'll raise your, all right, first of all, are you there, Ms. Moore?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can. If you'll raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Yes, Mindy Moore. I'm at seven zero three zero Sim Street, Unit two oh three, and I appreciate being able to speak with you tonight on the critical need for affordable housing in our city specific to the proposed Old Town residence apartments. The recent Arvada Housing Assessment and Strategy Report documented that for Arvada's workforce, those people working in our city who may or may not live here, nineteen percent of them are in retail trade, and another fifteen percent are in accommodations and food services. That means that thirty-four percent, or more than one-third, of our city's workers are in what are generally lower-paying service industries. These are the people who provide us with our groceries, cut our hair, serve us in restaurants, service our cars, and they keep this city alive. Right now, they cannot afford rentals or homes in Arvada, and they have to drive in back and forth from cheaper housing on our roads if they can find it. We recently heard that the proposed developer of the old Kane Mart property, this is the Morgan Group, they are proposing to make five percent of their units affordable to those earning eighty percent of area median income. And to my knowledge, the Morgan Group has not asked the city or urban renewal, they have not asked for any subsidies. And while five percent is not enough, it's a start and should be commended. We also just heard last week the Chair of our own Planning Commission say that we need more affordable housing in Arvada, and as he stated, if the city is going to begin giving up our dwindling supply of land that could be creating retail jobs, offices, sales revenues, we should get the trade-off of affordable housing in exchange for allowing a conditional use of residential-only. Right now, nothing would be affordable in the proposed Old Town Residences Project. So I would challenge Trammell Crowe to be an even better neighbor than the Morgan Group, and make a commitment to having more than five percent of their units available to even lower-income residents. These units can be dispersed throughout the buildings, not segregated, and this will allow some affordable housing, such as for those people who are serving your residents. And I would ask our city council to make this conditional use approval for residential-only contingent upon that. This is the only way that Arvada will truly be welcoming to all, not just to those of privilege. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Dr. Hall?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Raise your right hand.
It's up.
Very good, thank you. Swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Okay, as we know, council is tonight considering a conditional use permit to allow a solely residential rather than mixed-use development. This massive apartment complex will be right on the edge of the Old Town Arvada Historic District and our charming and treasured downtown. This project was first voted down, then resurrected and approved after some questionable maneuvering that was taken to court by a citizens group with the city losing. Now the project is back again with minimal changes. In the meantime, a new land use code has been adopted with an amendment that was introduced at the last minute with no opportunity for citizen input, allowing six stories to be built on this site. This enormous building will overwhelm the expansive and beloved view from Old Town, disrupting the Old Town character provided by the smaller-scale buildings in the area. The Transit Station Framework Plan, adopted by city council and importantly incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan, specifically states that the view from Grand View is part of the uniqueness and historic character of Old Town and should be protected. As Dr. Byers already said, the plan says that because of the strong desire to maintain the views from Grand View Avenue, the development will need to be tailored to preserve the views. While this may reduce overall density for new development and reduce transit ridership, these goals must be balanced with the local desires to preserve this key view. There are many other quotes in this plan that emphasize the intention to limit development to preserve Arvada's character. I'm just going to share one more. The historic designation of Old Town adds to the character of the area, but also presents limitations to increased density near the Old Town Station. Three of the planned goals also clearly demonstrate the city's intentions regarding the development south of Grand View. Dr. Byers mentioned one. Goal three, preserving the historic fabric and scale of Old Wadsworth and Grand View Avenue. Goal four, preserving the Grand View from Grand View, and goal eight, developing a unique character that supports the look and feel of Old Town for transit and capital improvements. Trammell Crowe has claimed in their presentation that this project is consistent with the Transit Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. It is not. This is a requirement for a conditional use permit, that it be consistent. You should reject it on this basis. Once the unique Old Town view is gone, it is gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
No.
Okay, that concludes the public testimony portion. The applicant can present some rebuttal. Anything else you would like to present in consideration of the public testimony that's been presented here tonight?
Yes, I would like to just address the Transit Framework Plan and this height issue on Grand View, because we've taken this very seriously. We've heard the discussions. I actually have, and I think this is why the planning staff is relying on what they're saying, and it's what we've looked at, that the Transit Framework Plan has lots of nice wording about keeping Grand Views. It also has an exhibit, and the exhibit shows where three views should ideally be maintained. It's not all along Grand View, and in fact, a lot of Grand View is, the views are already blocked. They were blocked by the Levy Building and by buildings going west on Grand View. There's a, there's a view corridor that's being asked to be preserved east of Wadsworth, in a couple blocks out from Wadsworth on Grand View looking south. There's a view corridor between Old Wads and the Wadsworth Bypass that is one block. The city picked the station area block to have that view. And then there's a very narrow view corridor from over Old Wads, essentially the right-of-way and starting to branch out as it goes down the hill. It is defined with boundaries. It's got hash marks on it, and, and so there's a difference between the language in the plan and what's shown in the exhibit. And what we have done is comply with the exhibit, and the city opted to have the station area plan, the new station plan, and the plaza and the acquisition of Levy Building be the preservation of the Grand View, one of the three Grand Views. Now, I'll just throw in one- the three Grand Views. Now, I'll just throw in one other thing. Another thing that we hear a lot about is preserving and in fact enhancing the urban forest, which it gets called an urban forest, so we're now calling it an urban forest, between Vance and Old Wads, because people want those trees. There's cottonwoods in there that the city would like to see removed. There's old elms that people want to see cut down and replaced. They want to see the urban forest replaced. We have been required to replace it with more than the caliber inches that ever existed there, with more trees. And so the notion of restoring the urban forest, which blocks the views, and having a view corridor are contradictory. And so what I think has been achieved here is that the city has designated the station area plaza and removed a building, and we set our building back and created a Grand View from the station. And the other portion of the block that goes from Vance to Old Wads, we are committing to restore this urban forest and plant more trees than we even had there historically. So I just want to clarify this discussion, and I appreciate, I understand the name Grand View. I'm a native of Denver. I understand where all that comes from, and I appreciate all the view corridors that we deal with all throughout our metropolitan area. But the exhibit is very clear that the whole Grand View is not going to be a Grand View. It is going to be in three different locations, stretching from east of Wadsworth all the way to west of Old Wads. So I just offer that for clarification.
Do you want to offer that as an exhibit?
I'd be happy to.
Why don't you give it to the city clerk?
I don't know what page it is on the Transit Area Plan, but I'm sure somebody at the City Planning Office knows.
It's Page 23 of the Transit Framework Plan, I believe.
If anybody from Council would like to see that, we can, why don't you go ahead and bring it up, and we can pass it around.
Your Honor, would you like us to pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, we can, we can make that happen.
If you've got other points you want to go ahead and make while we're, you're-
No, I don't want, I just realized I'm not supposed to touch the lectern, so sorry to keep having my papers out.
Well, basically, you're the one who's there, so-
Yeah, exactly. It's for my benefit also. The yellow line that shows on that map, by the way, is where the Vance corridor would have been. It's actually been moved east of that. I don't know if you were going to put it up, or people had questions, or?
Okay, Council, is everybody good to go, or do we want, we're going to have some questions? Do you want to take a, take a brief break? We've had the presentation from the applicant. We've had rebuttal from the applicant. I will now open it up for City Council questions or action. Who wants to start? Mr. Fiver?
I just want, I think you just made that picture bigger, please. I'd like to, maybe we should have some discussion around this. It's slightly different than what Mr. Moser gave us, because he had a yellow line in it, but... So what I'm looking, can you scroll to where the arrows are pointing? Yeah, there you go. So the view sheds, I'm trying to understand this. I see where the arrows are pointing, but up on Grand View, are they connected, those arrows? Is that how I'm reading that correctly?
Probably should go to someone from the team who-
Yeah, somebody from the team. Oh, we're waiting for them. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Smetana can probably answer those questions.
Sorry, I just rushed back to my office. So, I'm sorry, I missed part of that question.
So the question is the view, the views corridors? I see the arrows, the gray arrows pointing, you know, south, but they look to be connected up at Grand View. Is that like a section of view corridor, if I stood anywhere in that section? Is that how I'm meant to interpret that?
There are actually three different ones. I know it's really hard to tell on this drawing, and I want to point through the screen, but I can't. So there's one, the narrow one on the left-hand side at Old Wadsworth. There's one kind of in the middle of the picture, which is on Grand View between Wadsworth Bypass and Vance, and then one farther onto the right, just below Stocky Walter. So those are, there's three distinct ones that were shown on that plan, but not along the entire corridor.
Okay, and the one, and the property in question is right where the P is, right?
Correct. And at that point in time, with that plan in 2007, that's essentially where the hub was going to be located. And we then relocated the hub to the west to be right directly south of the transit platform.
Yeah, I do remember us moving it. Okay, that's, for now, that's all the questions. I just wanted to explain this, this drawing.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant, Mr. Moser, if you'd like to come up. So I think the last time that, that we saw this plan, three years ago, nearly three years ago when it was approved, both of those two northern fingers of the building had the, the top row of units on the Grand View side of it removed, so there was essentially a setback on that top floor. And I noticed this time, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the, the western finger, or the one in the center, still has that configuration, but the one further to the east has units all the way out to the edge and, and full height. But it also appears that there have been other things done farther to the west on the project where the townhomes are, or that, that middle finger of, of units, to either move that further east or shorten it down, or something to, to more open up that side. Can you speak to kind of what those differences are from what we saw last time versus what we see today?
Yes, Mayor, Council members, Councilmember Marriott, we, we took the, that northeast finger, can somebody put up the plan, or is that, is that too late now?
No, you can, no, we can bring it back.
What page is your yellow, was it Page 9, where you have the yellow? I think it was Page, Page 12 of the slideshow, if somebody can pull that up. But anyway, what we did is we did eliminate those outside units going up to the top floor and created a setback, and then pulled the units back a tad. So on that one, the, that finger that you're talking about where the yellow is used to extend a little bit for, yeah, the plan you had up was the right one. That one. The, that finger building that extended to the west was a little bit longer, and we brought it back a little bit to open up that courtyard. And that's what created, if you remember the, the drawing with the yellow dotted lines, it created a bigger triangle and allowed for the views to be broader from looking towards the mountains.
Right. Okay. And it appears to me that that was through no sacrifice in the views that are located along Grand View further to the east, because although that one story was set back, it was still there. So it kind of increased views without the other side of the compromise, without taking additional views away. Is that, would you agree with that, or would you not agree with that?
Not sure. I-
Understand, yeah.
Taking views away from-
That's a terrible, that's a terrible way to phrase a question. That's okay. I'll, I'll move on.
We did eliminate units. The yellow is an elimination of units, and we pulled the building back a little bit to the east-
Right.
-to open up the courtyard.
Got it. I, I think that's what I was, what I was wondering about there. So, one of the things when I go to that section of Grand View now, and particularly in the spring, summer, and fall, there are quite tall trees on the, at various places on that site, including up on top of the, top of the bluff up by the railroad tracks. And there's not that, you know, there's a nice view of the trees, but there's not a view into the distance from that spot mostly anyway. When you, I assume that those trees will be mostly removed and new trees put in their place, will that, over some period of time when that landscaping matures, look much like it does today, or how will that look?
It will probably look heavier than it does today, because we're being required to put in more caliber trees, and there'll be newer, better trees. One of the things that your Parks Department has requested is, you know, there's some sick elms that they want replaced, and there's some non-native cottonwoods that they want replaced. And so in that process, we'll be replacing trees that are better and healthier and probably grow as big or bigger.
Right, okay. And any idea, you guys have any, any idea how big a trees you're going to put in from a height standpoint, or how long it'll take them to gain some maturity and, and have, have kind of their final effect? Is that decades away, or is it, is it just a short time away?
Well, we plan on planting, I mean, we'll, we're planning on taking out as few trees as possible. We'd like to keep as many trees as possible, but some will have to be removed-
Some, some will stay.
Due to their health. So some will stay.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a call by the city. I think the city's actually already pegged for us which ones they want removed and which ones we should keep. And then there will be, based on grading and that sort of thing, we may have to remove some trees. But we plan on planting some, some fairly significant caliber trees, bigger than you might normally plant. And the city has got us, we've, we've got a schedule that shows the caliber or the thickness of the trunk, what we're planting all the way, all the way around the site. And as I mentioned, there'll be, I think, 57 more trees than there are there total. So it should be a heavier, taller density eventually.
Right. Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, if I could just do a clarification on that map you all are looking at, I should explain that the yellow line that was on that was not part of the exhibit. That was something that we put in that showed the boundary, that would be the eastern boundary of the new view plane from the station. And we had put that in so we could understand how that was being impacted. So I just wanted to clarify that the yellow is not part of the original exhibit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Ford, do you have questions?
Sorry, it's getting the mouse sometimes where I want it. Actually, I did think of one question as Mr. Moser was speaking. Mr. Moser, do you have any financial data that would show the economic impact of approximately 400 residents versus commercial, commercial businesses in that area, just looking at it from a, a square footage, say? Because I, I did, and also, have you ever calculated approximately what 400 new residents or might add in terms of train ridership?
I, we have not done an analysis of how many of 400 residents would ride the train or what their financial contribution would be to the Old Town businesses, no.
Thank you.
I would hope that a certain amount of their income would go to Old Town businesses, certainly.
Yes?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions based upon the testimony and the issues we're supposed to be considering tonight. So one of the issues Ms. Young raised was a concern that people aren't going to have an access to Old Town from the property as easily as they might. And is it my understanding that you have added something there on the northwest corner? And how does that work in terms of what you're proposing there?
Well, today, obviously, there's no way to go from this parcel with, into Old Town without going up Vance. And so that's still the case. You'll have to walk along 56 and then up Vance, and we give two different alternatives for going up Vance. We have been very insistent and worked very closely with the city to have a sidewalk that meandered to try and make it a little more strollable, walkable, and have strollers and that sort of thing, be able to go up and down that hill. When we talked to the, the business owners during our last open house, we had a variety of business owners say, you know, you still have to walk up Vance. And that's a, that's a negative to come to our businesses. And could you connect from the courtyard so that people who lived in the residence could just walk through the courtyard? And it's not a very far climb, and not nearly as steep, and certainly not as far, so we're creating a walkway that will go up to the corner of Vance and Grand View to- creating a walkway that will go up to the corner of Vance and Grand View to create more access for the residents to get to the Old Town businesses.
So that will be directly from the rooftop courtyard?
Directly from the courtyard, which is on top of the parking garage, which is below Grand View. So they would just, we, we've got a path that we've designed that takes us up to the corner of Grand View and Vance.
Okay.
So they don't have to go, if you were a resident, you wouldn't have to go back to the lobby, go out 56th, go up 56th, go up Vance to get to Old Town. So it's, it's a great idea and works really well for us.
Good.
And then, and I guess this is going to go to the issue of, it was brought up during testimony tonight in terms of application mitigating adverse impacts and, and the discussion of whether or not these are similar characteristics of the proposed use or comparable with existing and planned uses. And one of those questions comes up around what some people call affordable housing, some call attainable housing. This project, through some testimony, is being described as luxury housing. How do you respond to that?
This project is what we would call market rate apartments. And by market rate, it ties to what I would say is the average median income, and we've done some analysis. People, I don't want to, I don't want to call it workforce housing, or attainable housing, or affordable housing, because there's connotations to that in terms of where those income levels are. But what I can say is that our rents are pretty much pegged to average median income in Jefferson County. So if you look at our average rental rate, the average rental rate is about what CHAFPA says the average rental rate needs to be to be affordable to somebody making an average median income, depending on household size, in Jefferson County. As a result, when you look at how we structure our rents, we'll probably have about 50% of our units that will be affordable to people that make less than 100% average median income, and some units that therefore will be, for, will, will be for people who make more on an average income basis. I don't think we would have, I would not call this luxury housing. Might we have a few units, townhouses, two-story, three bedrooms, that rent to somebody that makes 115% of average median income in Jeffco? Yes, that's possible, there would be a few units. We might also have a few units that are available to somebody that makes 90 or even 80% of median income, but the average is right on the CHAFPA median income in today's rent.
And how does that compare to our other projects, such as Park Place at Old Town?
We're very similar to Park Place, probably a tad less than Solana, not, pretty competitive with Solana, perhaps a little bit more than Water Tower. As units get older, their rents generally can be a little more competitive than a new product, but we are not luxury by any stretch. If, I don't know what people define as luxury, but it's not 120% of median income or anything.
Okay.
But the average rent will be the average, and we have to do that to rent them. So we're just enough, we're just, I don't want to say affordable, because that's got too many connotations. It's a, it's, it's an average rent for the, an average income.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to follow up on a couple of other things that Ms. Young offered in her testimony. With regard to the, and this is probably a question for the city attorney, but with regard to the, the use of the commercial property across the street, can, can we couple these together, or are they decoupled for purposes of this conversation?
They really are decoupled for purposes of this conversation. We're considering whether the use proposed for this particular lot is appropriate, and so your determination and your evaluation tonight would be based on that.
So based on, so the conditional use in that where there would be no commercial use on this site is really the conditional use permit?
Right, that's the use. There are criteria as part of that conditional use process that do permit you to consider whether or not this use in this particular location will have adverse impacts on the surroundings areas, and how that will integrate into the surrounding areas. So in that sense, you can consider what is in the surrounding, the lots surrounding this one. But in terms of what we're approving tonight, and, and specifically what we're, the policies we're balancing, it's related to this particular lot, and the conditional use permit is requesting that residential use, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, I think, actually, the mayor asked a question on the affordable housing or attainable housing question, so I appreciate that answer. And then, Mr. Byers stipulated that it, that it violates the spirit, and I didn't write it down perfectly, but of Section 4.1. And I'm not, I, I'm not sure what 4.1 is.
I believe...
That's in design review?
Okay.
It, it, that's what I was going to say. It is in the design review guidelines. I would note that the design review guidelines do not apply in this particular area. There are other places where they talk about views, like the transit framework plan, but the design review guidelines themselves are not applicable in this particular location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott?
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I have another question.
Okay, yes, thank you. Go ahead.
I wanted to ask Mr. Moser what average salary or median salary he used for Arvada when he did his calculations on rent?
Not easy wearing glasses and having masks, they fog, they snag. Thank you, Councilwoman Ford and, and Mr. Mayor. Let me see if I can find that. They're not a calculation that we did. It's a CHAFPA report that's issued for Jefferson County, and it has rent levels and income levels. And I don't, I don't seem to have it here. But I can, I can certainly get that information, but it comes out of CHAFPA reports.
She's got it.
For Jefferson County. Well, I don't have income levels, I have rent levels. CHAFPA does rent levels.
So, so what, how did you look at the, you know, when we look at this as looking at it, market rate versus luxury housing, because I've heard this argument a lot of times, and when I've looked at what people say is market rate housing, it seems very high to me. When you were talking, I, if my memory serves me correct, I think our median income level in Arvada is about $86,000, somewhere around there. And when I took 30% of that, I got $2,5800 and divided that by 12. Am I doing that right? And I got $2,150 as, as what the rent would be a month. Is that pretty much what your calculations are close to?
I, well, our, our average rents are less than $2,000, so I, first off, CHAFPA takes the rent, and then I don't know, Councilwoman Ford, if they use 30% or 33 or 35. I'm not exactly sure what the percentage is, but the way you calculated it is generally how they calculated it. But for 2020 Jeffco rents, and they fluctuate by units, they run from about $1,700 to, for a one-bedroom, and down about $1,875 a month.
Okay. And, Mr. Moser, I wanted to ask you, on that meandering trail on Vance, is that going to be ADA compliant?
Yes, that's why we were doing it.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, the whole project is ADA compliant, and another issue, as you all have changed your lighting codes, we are 100% compliant with your street lighting codes and, and public space lighting codes also.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Moser, I have one other question. In terms of, because I hear a lot about activating a street. In terms of West 56th Avenue, it's my understanding that we're going to have a lot of buses there. Is it, is it true that that is going to be the access into the parking garage as well, West 56th Avenue?
Yes, West 56th Avenue is the access, is the only access that this site has.
Okay.
So the car access will be via 56th. There's also an entry to the south hotel and retail site on 56th, and there's also an entry to the south retail hotel site on Vance. But we cannot do the grades, we cannot put an entry off of Vance into the, into the residential on the north side.
And as far as, you know, activating that street, what, what do you think will activate that street, or cause West 56th Avenue to be activated, other than the people who are right there in the apartment? Do you think that the, will people from the commercial on the south side activate it somehow? How do you see activation occurring?
I think primarily, you, you're spot on. The activation will happen from the residents who live in the multifamily units. They'll happen from people going back and forth from the retail, and I think it will really happen with the hotel. Because I think the hotel is already being shown what happens with hotel, that there will be activation going into Old Town to have dinner, or lunch, or, or stroll around Old Town. I think there might be some activation with some destination coming across Wadsworth, but Wadsworth is such a significant state highway, that I think the primary activation is going to come from our development.
And in terms of that development to the south, and I, I remember asking this question during that hearing, but what, what I'm concerned about is the commercial on that side. Do you have any idea who's coming in yet there?
Well, we, we, we assume there will be a hotel, and still feel that there will be a hotel. It might take us a few months longer, given the circumstances, but we're actively pursuing the hotel. On the retail side, we actually have, surprisingly, we've touched base with our brokers, we actually have continued interest from the people who talked to us about the site prior to COVID-19, and they remain interested. And I think that we'll probably see 40 to 60% of the tenancy be retail, if, restaurant, if not more. And they all are looking to be in Old Town or along Wadsworth. And there's not very many choices, and so this is just another option for, for that.
Do you think, do you think it's likely that people in Old Town are going to go down into your commercial area there on West 56th Ave? Do you see a lot of traffic of people going down? Or do you have any other path that you see people traveling in that commercial area?
I think the south properties, both the hotel and the retail, consider that their primary market are the people that are in our new residential building. And then obviously, the retail views the access from Wadsworth as a primary. Will some people walk down the hill? They might, if it's a, if it's a good place that people want to go to, then people will walk down the hill. I think it's a better chance that people will walk down the hill under the new plan than they, they would today. But, you know, for the most part, I think the retail looks at Wadsworth, and looks at the multifamily, and looks at the hotel, and says that's our, that's our submarket.
And, and Wadsworth then really isn't a walking, we wouldn't consider Wadsworth truly a walking area, would we? I mean, it's...
Well, what happens, I know you're under, you're underway, the city's underway with a new town planning effort, and they're trying to figure out how to redesign Wadsworth Retail to be more attractive to pedestrians. Right now, walking on Wadsworth's not particularly entertaining, but we're, we're working with the city on our frontage to make sure that we have nice sidewalks, we've got some open space on the south side of our building, we've got a plaza right at the corner, and we're trying to create areas on all the corners, all four corners that we're dealing with on 56th, where people can gather and feel a little more welcome than perhaps they do today with areas that are bigger than just two sidewalks meeting each other. So I think part of it's the environment, part of it obviously is Wadsworth, and I think over time, depending on what happens south of us, that perhaps people will use Wadsworth sidewalks more often than they do now, but that's not what we're relying on from a business development standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the conditional use permit for Old Town residences generally located at 7267 West 56th Avenue be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission, and I'd like to speak to my motion just a little bit. So when I view these criteria, the, to approve a conditional use permit, I find that this project achieves all of them. Some of them, of course, very, very easily. And others, I believe it achieves as well through some very good use of design, and particularly, I, this design as it has evolved over a very long period of time, I, I believe has, has gotten better. And these design changes, these design evolutions have really helped address criteria number four. And that's, that the, that, that it doesn't create any adverse impacts. That's hard on a project like this, because you can always, if you make anything absolute, you can't do anything. But when looking at the preponderance of the evidence, I can find very little, to, to virtually none, that doesn't comply with these six criteria. I want to tick off a couple of the things about this project that I, that particularly, I think, address this criteria four, and that is, one, the design. The fact that the western side of the project has had units removed, both on the north side of that finger, also that finger has moved to the east and has gotten shorter, and units have been moved off of the eastern, or, excuse me, the western face of that part of the building, is a design element that takes away what could be some adverse impacts, and really addresses those adverse impacts. I think also this project, because it's all structured underground parking for all the residents, again, is a design feature. I think it's a very expensive design feature, a very difficult design feature for the applicant, but yet answers these, these negative things that may happen with a project like this. And I think the, the, you know, we're, we're looking here at this particular parcel, this particular project with, you know, is a conditional use permit appropriate here for first-floor residential? I believe that's what the conditional use permit is for. And when I look at this particular mixed-use zoning, there's a couple of different ways, I think, to think about mixed use. Mixed use could be, parcel zone mixed use could be used for either commercial or residential, or a mix of both. I, I, I believe that this particular parcel being all residential doesn't violate the mixed use at all, and, and the conditional use permit for allowing first-floor residential, I think, is entirely appropriate here. I know technically, the entire area doesn't matter, but, but if you consider the whole parcel bisected by West 56th Avenue, there's certainly mixed use across here, and I, and I think very good mixed use. I want to say one other thing about, about rents and market rents. We're not here to, to judge those, or to, to specify what those are. You know, this project being market rent means that it may rent for more than the applicant thinks it'll rent for, it may rent for less than the applicant thinks it'll rent for. The applicant is taking that risk. And, you know, in my own rental portfolio, I have some properties that rent for more, some that rent for less, and it's generally based on the quality of the, of the unit itself, or the location of the unit itself, the desirability, any number of factors. And, and, and this project, I think, you know, falls under that exact same, exact same thing. I, I really don't even know where the concept of luxury apartments comes from, because that really is just addressing a market that may exist or may not exist. So I, I don't have any problem with, with that. As far as, you know, this project being affordable housing or not affordable, let's be clear, in that particular context, what you're talking about is, are some units... in that particular context, what you're talking about is, are some units subsidized to be less than the market rate, either at the expense of the other renters in the building, or via public money that's input to make that happen? And none of those exist in this particular case, so I don't think there's any negativity to this, because it's just a market-rate housing project, like the vast majority of all the housing in Arvada. So with, given all those comments, I'm certainly going to be voting yes. I think this is a well-done project. I think it's been a long time coming, and I'll give the applicant kudos for sticking with this for so long. Particularly, I will give them lots of credit for listening to the public, delivering a project, continuing to evolve the project over time to a better outcome. And I really believe this is the best outcome that can be achieved here, and I want to congratulate them on their efforts and the final design that they're at.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just following up on my colleague, Mr. Marriott's comments, sometimes we like to elaborate and extrapolate on our thoughts, so that the public kind of understands where our heads are at as we make these decisions. There's a little bit of illusion out there that sometimes we don't see both sides, or we can't put ourselves in both sides' shoes, and that's absolutely not true. I know all seven of us feel these decisions, because this is our city, and that's what we're here to do, is to make these decisions. So I'll just start by saying, this is a beautiful design. Mr. Mosher, I want to commend you and your team. You have clearly put many, many hours into this, you have listened to a great deal of feedback, and it's obvious that a great deal of care and intention has been put into this design, so I want to commend your team for that. Thank you. Especially the trees, really like the trees, you guys. And going off track just slightly, I hope our city attorney will forgive me, this is my district, and I would actually benefit from this building being in my district, because that would be a lot of new voters, many of whom would be young people who may see resemblance to myself. And so I can certainly see, in the long term, this being a direct benefit to myself. That said, my charge from the voters of Arvada is to sit here and to think about what is in the best interests of Arvada and the people who are here today. And there's a famous Supreme Court quote, if you will all forgive the case it comes from, it is that, "I can't define it, but I know it when I see it." And that is, what is Arvada? And so this is not Denver. This beautiful design, I feel like, would belong in Denver. But looking at our criteria that we must judge by, I see numbers two, four, and six. You guys were absolutely right, those were the same numbers I looked at, because you guys sailed through one, four, and five, or one, three, and five. But on this particular block, we don't have any residential housing right now. This would be a new thing. I'm a huge supporter of the south parcel, with the hotel and the retail, you guys just knocked that one out of the park, and I'm a huge supporter of that. But with this residential, that would be a new use specifically onto this block, and that would make it 24 hours. That impacts the hours of operation that are currently established on this block, a new level of density that does not exist on this block so far. And so I believe the design works to mitigate many, many of my concerns. However, just the mass, and the measure, and the scale, I feel is not in comparison to the existing structures. And in the long term, I do also believe that the loss of the eastern panorama, where we must remember, that is where the cityscape of Denver can be seen. I feel that that can also be detrimental to some of, have an adverse effect, irrevocable effect, effect, when that building goes up, for those on the eastern end of Grand View. So for these reasons, I will be voting no, and I hope that you understand it is nothing personal or direct to your team. I think you've done excellent work, and so it is simply these small tweaks that I feel just maybe we can do just a little bit better in getting it in compliance with just the scale and everything else. So, but thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, you know, I guess we've had a lot of time to think about this, too, and let's just kind of go with me through my head and judgment on this. You know, when the framework happened, actually, let me start with, I think Shelley Cook said some good comments. I think the way she framed it was spot on. I think one of the things that she said, there's always room for disagreement with how you interpret the framework. The framework plan, the transit framework plan, was changed by us fundamentally when we actually moved the hub by better utilization of actually dead space. If you think of where the parking garage was originally intended in the framework plan to where it is now, I think it, if it hasn't, Mr. Devon needs to submit for our awards with Dr. Cog on that thing. I've been waiting for five years on that thing, but hopefully I'll still be on council when that parking garage will have an award for the way we use land, the way we designed it, where we nestled it, and maximized it. When that happened, in my opinion, we've changed the framework plan, because originally, it was focused that something like that would be in this view shed, I guess is what we're looking at. Well, we actually opened up the view shed more to where it is now by removing the levy building, and by broadening and embracing what we felt was the grand view. And so where I'm leading is, time has changed, and I think the council knows, I've had a lot of discussion around memorializing and institutionalizing our decisions based on what happens in the surrounding areas. And this is one of those where it's important that we understand and recognize the decisions we've made have altered, sometimes, the future. With that, I think our view shed has actually changed. We actually moved it. It's, in fact, it doesn't even recognize in the framework plan that the area we did increase the view shed was not even identified as it. So we've got to, as a council, be able to adapt to the ebb and flows of our society, our community, transit, population, so many other things. And then we have to struggle with the thoughts of sprawl versus density, you know? Sprawl versus density, and there's a lot of demons and discussions around that as well, if we wanted to. And really, we got to look at, honestly, density, because at the end of the day, we can't just be adding more roads, and wider roads, and more emissions, and contradict ourselves in other topics that, you know, support our sustainability for the future. So now what we have to do is, we have to look at, well, how do we address all those other conflicting agendas and initiatives? And again, I'll go back to Shelley Cook, thank you for bringing up Metrovision. That is a Dr. Cog, you know, view of what we are to be doing as stewards of the region, not just of our community. So I go and I look at the criteria, and I think through it, and, you know, we can't sit here and say, well, yes, if I look at the parcel as is, yes, it's supposed to be mixed. But also, we also know that when we sold the property as full nine acres, we got 100% commercial across the street. So when you look at criteria four, you look at the planned uses in the surrounding areas, we did meet the intent of it, and we did achieve what we're looking for, and we still met multiple aspects of the transit framework. It might not have been perfect, exactly what some lens somebody looked through might have interpreted what that framework was, but I think the intent in which we as council have determined, we've met it. I feel like the applicant has met it. And because of that, and I believe that you've met and complied with all the criterias, I'll be supporting your motion.
Ms. Ford, did you wish to make any comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Well, since we're revealing our hearts, I would like to reveal my heart. It probably comes as no shock to anyone listening to this, that I will be voting no, because I've voted no twice before, and my vote will be based on the fact that I too believe that the applicant did not meet criteria two, four, and six. And Mr. Mosher, I would like to say also, I agree with what Councilmember Simpson said. First of all, you have an amazing amount of endurance, and very few people would have stayed with all that has happened on this project. I feel that you did a lot of work to try to comply to what the people were looking for in this situation. The way I look at this project is this, and this land use. The purpose of having a transit station is for the train. We want to move people. It is my understanding that the people that mainly use trains, and people who travel by public transportation are people of a lower socioeconomic means. We have now built two market-rate apartment complexes in our Old Town. We need more mixed housing, which is what our comprehensive plan asks for. We have an aging population, and we need more housing. We have one historic district in Arvada, one commercial historic district, that's how I describe Old Town. When I travel and go into new towns, new places that I've never traveled, I can assure you that I personally, and I know a lot of my constituents, they like the historic areas. They don't want to see the new construction. Because if we want to see new construction, we're getting new construction on Ralston. We don't have to have new construction all over. And as far as the transit-oriented development, unfortunately, it fails, because unlike the way I used to be able to travel to New York from New Jersey, I could walk to a grocery store, I could walk to a bus that took me to a train station, and I could even walk to that train station a mile away. I feel that this project is going to have adverse effects on our city through congestion. I feel that it's actually going to diminish our Old Town. And by the way, our Old Town is doing quite well before, it was doing quite well before the pandemic. It was economically viable, even without the extra 400 residents. Once we get rid of that view, it's gone. Grand View has no real mention, you know, no real meaning, is what I meant to say. On page 16 of our Transit Station Framework Plan, it said that Old Town is an important retail, mixed-use, and cultural destination. That is, Arvada's culture. It's history. Yes, we're making history every day, but we are, I believe, taking what people love about Old Town, and we are changing it, and we are doing that all over. And I can't help but go back to that darn Transit Station Framework Plan that says, "This is an iconic station. This is supposed to preserve the historic fabric. This is known as the heart of the Gold Line stations." And yet, what we are doing is, we are creating a vision that's like every other city when we have something so unique like Old Town.
Nancy, you've gone silent on us.
I, I'm thinking, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you were talking or not, sorry.
No. This has been a very difficult project for me. It's put a lot of stress in my life for the past three years. Why? Because I don't hail from Old Town, I mean, from Arvada, but yet I recognize that Old Town is really what's unique about Arvada. It's, it makes it unique, and we're just making it look like everywhere else, and I think that's so unfortunate. And I can't get over, you know, the balancing with the local desires. I really, when I ran for city council in 2015, I spoke to a lot of residents. They told me they were not happy with the big building in Old Town. I have to vote according to what my constituents told me they wanted, and this is why I have to vote no on this project. And I thank you to all my fellow council members, I appreciate all the comments that you're saying tonight. I know that you and I have sparred a lot on our differences, but I still appreciate what you have to say and your views. And so I just want, I want you to know that even though I'm not there with you in person, I really am there with you, and I appreciate you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Jones?
We feel you. Nancy, sorry. Anyway, so I won't belabor my comments, only to say, again, I agree with a lot, with all that's been said tonight from my fellow council members. And, you know, I too have struggled with this. If we want to go back to voting records, I voted no, and then yes. So I've struggled with this project at varying degrees of, I don't even know, I don't even really know how to capture the words, but, you know, as I've gone through this, and I've read through the criteria at nauseam, to make sure that I clearly understood each point, and as I went back to the transit framework plan, and kind of compared my interpretation of that transit plan, Bob, you kind of opened up my mind and said what I was thinking, probably in a way that you explained it better than I probably could have. Because, you know, as I was staring at the map that kind of showed the view corridors, it dawned on me that, you know, from 2007 to 2021, it has changed, and it's changed because of a lot of different things. And the way you read the words in, you know, in the transit plan can be interpreted many different ways. Just, again, going back to page 18, last paragraph, "Because of the strong desire to maintain the views from Grand View Avenue to the south and west, the building heights and densities directly adjacent to the station, south of the tracks, will need to be tailored to preserve the views." And as I look at what you've presented tonight, and some of the modifications that you've made, it seems to me like you've tailored, will need to be tailored to preserve the views, you've tailored the project to preserve the views as best you can. And there was 140-foot span where there probably isn't going to be a view to the south, but on either side of that, there were going to be views. And so again, I've grown up here. Old Town has evolved through the years of my life, growing up in this town, and progress is hard, and change is hard. And, you know, as I think about, you know, those who might live here, or those who might use the rail, it's probably across the board. I don't know that I would pigeonhole one economic group to use the rail, to go one place or another. I wouldn't pigeonhole another group that might live here.
I, I wouldn't pigeonhole, uh, another group that might live here. And so, you know, again, I, I appreciate the fact that you clearly identified that two, four, and six of the criteria were more challenging than the others. But I would have to say that as I've gone through it, um, I can't find, uh, a reason why I could, uh, vote against any one of the criteria based on, uh, the plan that's been presented tonight. And so therefore I'll be supporting your proposal.
Uh, this has been a long, crazy road we've been on, on this project. And it's one where, um, you look at the history of Old Town, certainly, you know, I came here in the, in the seventies and, and have seen where Old Town was and where it is today. And, 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 you know, pre-COVID, you know, I couldn't walk down Old Town and I still walked down Old Town with a smile on my face because of just how the dreams have been answered and how people have really worked together. And I look at other projects that we've done and I can tell you, you know, and there's still divisive views on this, but people thought that Park Place at Old Town was going to ruin Old Town and it hasn't ruined Old Town. It provided residences, uh, on the eastern edge of McAvoy Park there that I think particularly from the west side blend in so well with, with Old Town and have provided folks who live there the opportunity to be able to walk into Old Town and, and enjoy the goods and services that are there. The mixing of older residents and younger residents has, has really been joyful for, for us to be able to see. And I see this project doing something very similar. I see this as a project that does address the needs and I appreciate Shelley Cook's comments in terms of, of the goals of transit and transit oriented development. And this, uh, project being 100% residential on the north side and looking to the surrounding areas and the, and the, um, commercial uses elsewhere can justify why this is 100% residential. Um, so it, it meets that from my perspective. I think that what, um, the applicant has done to add that, uh, access point from their, um, northwest corner, uh, to be closer to Old Town and responding to the merchants. And that's a, that's a group who we really need to be listening to in terms of, of why this is a desirable project and what the benefit is of, of that improved access from that point. Um, I think that, you know, the fact that some people, and we got a lot of emails on this, kept describing this as a luxury apartment complex when actually it's, it's much more market rate, right in the middle of the road where, where we have so many of our residents. And we, and we have other projects in the community. Uh, I've been down to Chaffa to testify and I've testified via Zoom and other times on Chaffa projects to bring, uh, below market subsidized, um, projects into our city and we'll continue to work on that. And, and we've got some exciting prospects on that, both in urban renewal and elsewhere in the city, uh, to address those needs. So I'm not going to put that burden upon this project. Um, I see the value of this project is what it does for Old Town. The fact that you can't forget that there's this hillside here and that it's from the Grand View side, uh, the heights of the building are entirely consistent with what's going on, on the north side of the property, um, and is comparable in height to the existing trees there. And, and like Ms. Simpson, I really do appreciate the, uh, the, the number of trees that are going to be planted and I think that's a, that's a great addition and, and helps to mitigate any concerns that people should have about, uh, the impact of this. Yes, it's, it's, uh, six stories from the, from the south looking north, but frankly, uh, with the, when you look at who is going to see it from there, um, it's not going to be a negative impact for the traffic that's on Wadsworth Bypass because they're busy driving on Wadsworth Bypass. They're not looking, uh, specifically into Old Town. And we've done some nice things to enhance, um, the wayfinding into Old Town with both the, you know, the sign we put on the, on the bridge there, the, the signs that we've put further down south as the direct access into, at, into Old Town and what we've done at, at 58th and, and Wadsworth Bypass in terms of signage there. So we've really enhanced, um, the, the findability of, of Old Town. And remember that this was a huge issue before the, the grade separation was put in. We totally took out an access point into Old Town and yet because of the other things we've done, we've, we've, um, really enhanced Old Town and, and kept it very viable. I agree with Ms. Mr. Jones that change is hard and people don't always like change, but, uh, it is the reality. Um, it, if you, if you don't have some change, you're, you're going to become stagnant and you're, and you're going to fall further behind. We've, we've created other new buildings in the Old Town area that frankly have enhanced Old Town. You look at both the, the building where Smoking Fins, uh, the building just to the, to the west of it, you look at the building where the Urban Renewal Office and, and Tappin Doe is, those are all quote unquote, modern buildings that have done a beautiful job of blending in. And I see that with the, the choice of materials and everything else that, that's being proposed with this project, that over time it truly blends in as well. So for all those reasons, I will be supporting Mr. Marriott's motion. Mr. Jones, if I could have you cast your vote. Okay, Ms. Ford, do you want to formally announce your vote?
Yes, Mayor, it will be known.
Thank you. Remaining votes are cast. This motion passes on a five to two vote with Williams, Pfeiffer, Marriott, Miller, and Jones voting yes and Ford and Simpson voting no. So the project is approved for a conditional use permit. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. We have public comment at this point. Do we have anybody that wishes to address council?
We do not.
Thank you. Uh, reports from city council, I'm going to lead it off tonight. We, um, recently were advised of the death of a former mayor in the city of Arvada, Dick Bartlett, who was the mayor from 65 to 69. He was, um, he was elected to city council and that was back in the days when city council picked the mayor from amongst themselves. And so he was selected mayor and there's a little known fact that was in his, uh, obituary that I found very interesting and may have accounted for how he got selected as the mayor among his council members. Uh, during the same time that he was mayor, he was also playing semi-pro football for the Colorado Colts. And so, uh, I don't know if he used his, uh, his wit or his, uh, his brawn to be, uh, selected as, as mayor. He was also very active with the Dorfjeffco, um, Board and was now Apex, uh, had been involved in the community for a number of years as real estate developer, real estate agent, um, and very well respected in the community and, and came in as mayor during a time and, and Gordon Rusick, uh, was sort of the historian on this aspect of it, that the city had just gone through some pretty troubling times with some recall elections and things of that nature. And so, uh, Dick Bartlett, who I knew, uh, was a real calming influence. So, uh, we, we note with sadness his passing and, and send our regards to, to his family. Any other council comments, questions? Seeing none, Mr. Devon?
No comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.